Hey, everyone. This is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bib Public Affairs. We're still getting set up for our live meeting. We'll be starting here shortly. Just wanted to make sure everyone knows we are live on Facebook. We just have all participants muted while we finish getting set up. Thank you. Check one, two. Testing sound for the website. Check one, two. This is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bib Public Affairs. About ready to get started.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting, the pre-commissioned meeting of the Macon Bib County Commission. Need to read these instructions and disclaimers before we go further than that is pursuant to the instructions from the President of the United States, the Honorable Donald J. Trump, the Governor of Georgia, the Honorable Brown Kemp, and well as the Mayor of Macon Bib County, Honorable Robert A. B. Ricker. Macon Bib County Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May the 5th, 2020 will be available to the Macon Bib County Commissioners by video conference only for the 5 o'clock PM pre-commissioned meeting and the 6 o'clock PM commission meeting. The commission chambers will be closed to the public and press as we follow the recommendations from the White House and the Governor's Office to limit public gatherings in order to slow the spread of COVID-19. Therefore, the public and press may only access the meeting simultaneously online at www.maconbib.us With that having been said, I'll ask the clerk to confirm that we have a quorum of commissioners on the line with us this afternoon. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for us?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Tillman, are you present?
Present.
Commissioner Bivens? Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
I'm here.
Commissioner Schlesinger?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Present and accounted for.
Commissioner Shepard? Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Wynn?
Also present.
Thank you.
I have seven out of nine.
Yes, sir.
But that gives us more than a quorum, and I count for a quorum, so that'd be eight out of 10. So with that having been said, we'll proceed. There are a couple of announcements that I need to make and changes to tonight's agenda. The first is there is an announcement that I need to make to you, but I'm advised by the attorneys that no further legislative action is needed at this point, and that is for a special sewer district application for Weatherby Plantation. I also need to add an item or two to tonight's agenda for action during the commission meeting and/or the regular commission meeting. The first is an amendment to the contract for improvements at Lake Tobasofki. We have allocated some additional funds for that project that Commissioner Allen had in his availability, and we're trying to amend the contract so that the contractor that's out there, starting on the work, can also do this additional work. So I need a motion to add that to tonight's agenda for discussion first of the pre-commissioned meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner Allen got you as a move, and Commissioner Schlesinger, was that you as the second?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. So I've got a motion and a second to add that to tonight's agenda for further discussion at pre-commission. Is there further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of adding that item to tonight's pre-commissioned agenda, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no?
Yeah, so no.
That's not a no. So the ayes have it, we'll add that as an item. Any other changes to the pre-commissioned agenda?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Schlesinger?
I'd like to add a follow-up discussion on the Orquins Compensation discussion we had last week.
We've had a couple of phone calls about that, and in anticipation of this, we've even asked or sent an invitation to a couple of the agents that are available tonight. So got a motion, but I'm Schlesinger, is there a second?
Second by Jones.
Second by Jones to add this broker of record review to tonight's pre-commissioned agenda. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of adding that to tonight's pre-commissioned agenda, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and we'll add that to tonight's agenda. The next item that I've got on the agenda now is a review of Governor Kemp's most recent executive order and the impact of that. I think Michael is prepared to give us a brief review of that and an update on where we are with the emergency, state of emergency order. Michael, are you there?
I am, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Good, go ahead and give us a review, please, sir, of the Governor's latest order.
Okay, so on April 30th, the mayor, the governor issued an executive order extending the state of emergency through June the 12th, Friday, June the 12th, so another 30 days. This is the public health state of emergency that allows him to act under the emergency powers found in state law, and it's the authority that he's been using for all of these executive orders that have come out over the last couple of months. The other effect of this executive order extends the sheltering in place requirements from his previous order of April 23rd. That was the 26-page order that we went through last week that talked about the different steps for reopening, but all he does is extend the sheltering in place requirement. But it's only for, as it's spelled out in that order, it's only for people with certain high-risk situations. So anyone age 65 or older, anyone living in a nursing home or personal care home or group home for medical care, and anyone with a variety of complicating medical conditions, essentially lung disease, heart disease, liver or kidney disease, diabetes, immunocompromised, or severe asthma or severe obesity. And so for those people, those groups of people, the shelter in place order continues also through June 12th. But for everybody else, the shelter in place order expired at the end of April, and so now between May 1st and May 13th, we are in the period of the order that he entered on April 23rd, setting out opening guidelines for various businesses as we discussed last week. And thereafter, after May 13th to June 12th, unless he issues another order, the only orders in place will be the shelter in place for those high-risk populations and the general emergency powers that gives him the power to issue further orders. So we'll continue to update if there's anything more that comes out of the Governor's Office.
Michael, I understand that gatherings of 10 are still prohibited unless social distancing can be observed. Is that right?
That's true. Through May 13th is the current status. Yes, sir.
Okay. Based on this, we have several members of the commission who are in the high-risk population, and therefore, we are going to continue to meet virtually by Zoom through our meeting on June the 9th. I anticipate and am hopeful that our following meeting, June the 16th, can be our first meeting where we reassemble here at Government Center and meet together. That means now with these Zoom meetings between now and June the 9th, the special meeting for the budget presentation, which will be called for 4 o'clock PM on May the 19th, will be by Zoom, and meetings of the Operations and Finance Committee as he schedules budget committee meetings, we'll have to do those by Zoom as well. So that's my intent of how we're going to continue to meet between now and June the 12th. Any questions from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Lucas, I see you with a question.
Yeah, the only thing that I'd like to say is that we, as commissioners, represent all of the people of this community, and we need to be aware of the numbers of people who are being infected and the deaths that we're experiencing in this community, and those numbers are going up. I will continue to get to Janice, the latest figures that we're getting. Commissioner Allen and I, as members of the Board of Health, so that we can keep you apprised of what's happening in our community. Our numbers are still going up, and yet we continue to open up stuff, so that's enough to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Well, we'll certainly be flexible on that schedule. Moving into tonight's pre-commissioned agenda, I will review for you very shortly the consent agenda, but we have on the line with us Karen Hicks, who was unable to be present with us at the Economic and Community Development Committee meeting. I had nominated Karen Hicks to serve on the Fort Hawkins Board, and her nomination was confirmed, subject to her being present tonight, and she is here on the line with us. Karen, can you hear me talking now?
I can, and thank you, Mayor Ricker, for that. I was attending a meeting on moving everything back to going back to work, so I was unable to attend that meeting.
Well, we're delighted that you can be here with us tonight. It's my understanding that you were in the 2019 Leadership Macon class?
Yes, sir. It was a lot of fun, and I think I encourage everybody to take.
Good, and you may look familiar to a lot of people because I understand you work as a gallery assistant at Macon Arts Alliance now.
I do. It's the best job.
Good, as well as a travel management and purchase card administrator for Kimco.
Yes, sir.
Good. Would you tell commissioners of the Economic and Community Development why you decided you wanted to serve on the Fort Hawkins Board?
Well, I love history. I love Macon. I was also awarded the Downtown Ambassador Award from Newtown last year for the 2019 Ambassador Award. I love Macon. I love the history of Macon, and being a part of Leadership Macon has given me the opportunity to join or ask to be on certain boards, and Fort Hawkins stood out as something that I would enjoy being on. Also, our Mill Hill Community Arts Center is located just on the backside of the Olmogy Mounds, right across the street. So that whole area, you know, we're hoping to bring back to life, and being a part of the Fort Hawkins is, to me, is part of that whole area that I hope to see can grow.
Good. Chairman Lucas, let me turn this over to you at this point to see if you or your committee members have any additional questions of Karen Hicks.
Okay, we had a motion and second to approve Ms. Hicks, and we're glad that you've chosen to, you've accepted that task of joining the Fort Hawkins Commission. They've needed some help in getting reinvigorated. Is there any member of the committee that has a question, who has a question? All right, I think we had a motion and a second to approve the nomination. Mr. County Attorney, do we need to do anything else other than accept her appearance?
There we go, sorry.
No Commissioner Lucas, there's been a motion and second, and then if there's no further discussion, you can now take a vote on it.
Okay. Can I say something real quick, Ms. Chair?
Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, thank you. Karen, thank you for agreeing to do this. It sounds like you've got some enthusiasm for it, and I'm glad to see these Leadership Macon people coming on to our authorities and serving. Thank you for doing that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I do appreciate that. Leadership Macon is fabulous. Rachel Gamble, one of your staff right now is participating, and it's wonderful. But thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, if all questions and comments have been made, all in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will, and the motion carries, we will recommend your appointment at the full commission meeting at a later.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Lucas, and Karen, thank you for being on line with us. You're welcome to state's public meeting, but if you've got other things you wanted to, you're welcome to drop off and leave the meeting.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is going to be the consent agenda, and I need to run through that for you right quick. But the first one is problematic, and I'm going to ask Michael again to tell us about the letter received from the Sheriff's Office when he did the background check for the applicant on Dirt Road Entertainment LLC. Michael?
Yes, sir. The first one has some problems, and there's another one later on that's just a little bit weird. I think it's Item B for HP Liquors. I'll address that when we get to that one. It's not a problem, but it's just a little weird. But this one is for, we received an application for Dirt Road Entertainment LLC to open a bar called Millennium Bar and Grill, a restaurant at 2455 Emory Highway. Dirt Road Entertainment LLC, the application says it's a single-owner business, and the name of the owner is a woman named Regina Smith. And if you look up the entity on the Secretary of State website, she's listed as the CEO, secretary, and CFO of Dirt Road Entertainment. As reflected in the sheriff's letter when we performed the background check, it was shown that in April of 2019, Ms. Smith was charged with aggravated assault, aggravated battery, and conspiracy to commit felony murder. And so because of this, the sheriff felt that this was not an appropriate candidate for an alcohol license. However, in addition to this, she also, Dirt Road Entertainment LLC is also the owner of record for an existing bar and grill known as Rodeo Bar and Grill on Pionono Avenue, and they have a current and active alcohol license, which they received before she got, you know, these charges. She received this one, I think, in 2018. And so based on this, my recommendation is a denial of the current application because the sheriff says that her background isn't fit, and a revocation of the existing license at Rodeo Bar and Grill for the same reason.
So the first item on the consent agenda, we're actually asking for consent to deny the application of Dirt Road Entertainment LLC doing business as Millennium Bar and Grill. Agent is Regina Smith, or the applicant is Regina Smith. And so we're being asked to deny that. Questions or comments about that particular one on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Let me give you all some background on Regina Smith and who she is. I haven't had a chance to talk with the sheriff, but I had a chance to talk with Regina. I know Regina, and I will tell you that Regina's son was murdered and shot and killed on Chambers Road by his best friend. Regina has been traumatized for years and trying to get some solutions to her son's murder. Regina has brought events and been involved in this community, and Regina, apparently, it is being said that this guy who supposedly murdered her son is now eluding that she was trying to now kill him. So according to Governor's Deals Bill that he signed in 2014 through the GCIC, anybody could be charged, but if those cases are not finalized, they are just charges, although they are serious charges. So although we are saying, because this could happen, anybody could be charged, and so, and sheriff is aware of this as well, that the GCIC only lists things that folks have been convicted of. So the sheriff himself or somebody's looking at pending charges. I don't know what's going to happen because I don't know all the background, but I know they're working with it. I'm not advocating, but I want to give the true story because it did happen on Chambers Road, where her son was murdered by his best friend, and she has been devastated, and she now stands accused of trying to kill the boy that killed her son. So, Michael, when we do these things, we need to give the whole background if we're just going to say that somebody's being charged with something, because I just want to give the whole background. Because as we stated, the young lady is in business, and so, and I do know of her because she is in business. And so I just wish her well and hope nobody else gets hurt from this, because she is a grieving mother, and only a mother understands losing a child. And so I don't know what else is pending, so we're talking about denying somebody, and they already have an existing license. You know, they could transfer their license, so that's something that we need to deal with, Mr. Mayor. And some of these things like that should be worked and talked behind the scenes because if a person has an existing license, they could transfer their own license for small fee and work it. So there are some other implications going on behind the scene that I won't further share here. So we can move forward however we want to, but I just didn't want to leave that out, that the young lady's charged with aggravated assault. There's something pending behind it that this person is shot and killed her son.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, sir. May I ask Michael McNeil something? Does the sheriff tell him of those things, of the background like Commissioner Tillman just spoke of? Does he tell you that when he gives you the information to deny or approve?
In this case, he wrote a letter to the mayor that was, it's on board docs, it's attached to the information on the agenda online. And what it says from the sheriff, it says, "During the background investigation in connection with the alcoholic beverage license application for Dirt Road Entertainment LLC, DBA Millennium Bar and Grill by Ms. Regina Smith, it was discovered that Ms. Smith is facing unresolved criminal charges for aggravated assault, aggravated battery, and conspiring to commit a felony murder. These charges were lodged against Ms. Smith in 2019. Because of the seriousness of these charges and the possibility that she would not be eligible to hold an alcoholic beverage license, were she convicted on any of these criminal violations, I recommend that this license be denied. My staff and I would be happy to discuss this recommendation with you or the full commission in greater detail if desired." So it doesn't go into, and I wasn't aware of the background facts as far as what Mayor Protem mentioned, but that's the information that we got from the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, follow-up. They're unresolved, so when will they be resolved, or how will it be resolved?
They're resolved by her, either going to trial or entering a plea, or, you know, that's how you resolve criminal charges, or they get dismissed by the DA.
Is that pending or imminent, or what's the deal on that?
Well, I can answer. It is pending, and what you heard is unresolved issue. So of course, if she's convicted, she will probably have to relinquish her current licenses. And so what I'm saying is she has current licenses, and the person that's charging her with this is the person that murdered her son, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to respond to Valerie's question because regardless of what we do, I haven't had a chance to talk to the sheriff. I think we ought to at least hold off and don't do anything because my question to the attorney or to Michael is, what do you do if the person already has license? Somebody already has license, and we're sitting here saying, oh, we're going to deny them this license, but they're already in business with a current license. So that was my only point of making it, so. I'm not advocating for her, but I'm sharing the backstory because it just sounded so bad that a female was being charged, and y'all don't know the backstory, and you can look it up, and I can share with the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Commissioner Allen got you signaling to speak. You may need to unmute yourself, though, sir.
Okay, hold on.
No, there you are. I got you.
You got me unmuted? Okay, I think since she's already got a license and it hasn't been brought to us about that until she has got this, another license coming in, she's not been found guilty, she's been charged. So, you know, I think we should table this until we get more information. You know, we're asking, us sitting around, not even in a room together, to try to discuss this. I think we're getting the horse behind the cart, or the cart in front of the horse. I need to take, I make a motion to table it.
Thank you.
Say it.
Got a motion to table by Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Wynn, is that right?
I tabled as well.
Okay, got a motion and second by Wynn and Watkins, and I think I heard Mayor Protem also saying that some more than enough for a motion table, non-debatable, all those in favor of tabling the alcohol beverage license application of Dirt Road Entertainment doing business at Millennium Bar and Grill, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the item is tabled.
All right, sorry.
All right, sorry. Um, I'm having technical difficulty with my muting. We got, we've tabled this particular application. I would suggest that maybe Michael get some investigative with the sheriff, get some background information back as, as early as he can. Is that okay with the commission?
Yeah, it is with me.
Yeah.
Okay. And we don't need any action on it. I just want to make sure we're clear on where we're going.
Are you going to follow up with us?
Yes, Commissioner.
That's something, that's something that's falling into cracks now. We haven't stopped bringing to y'all. We get it like we are now. And guess what? We're having to vote on something that we're right or wrong. So the best thing to do is table this. We need, we need more information.
Right. And that's what I'm gonna ask Michael to get and then come back to the commission and give you a report.
Okay.
You take it live. Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, the, the next item, uh, is, is an application, um, by Hatah Patel, business name JMB17 Incorporated doing businesses HP Liquors at 6374 Zebulon Road. Um, that is, uh, for, um, liquor, uh, beer and wine package sales to go from that location. Michael says that there's some quirk, uh, with this, but I'll ask him to chime in now. Michael, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, can now. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. There we go. Um, yeah, we don't, we don't get many of these, but this is a change of address. It's the same owner, but, uh, a new building. And so Rachel's put a map up on the screen for you. This is, uh, Zebulon Road, uh, just past 475. Um, and their current location is where the little red pin is, 6351. And they're just moving right across the street. And so I wanted to, I wanted to show you this map and just let you know that there's already a liquor store. If you drive by there, there, where it circles and there's woods on this map, um, there's actually a building there now that they've built. And so they're just moving across the street.
Okay. Any further question about, about the JMB17 HP Liquor, uh, application? If not, let me move on to, uh, item C, uh, is a, uh, O-P-E-S, Opes Capital Partners, LLC. Um, that is for beer and wine package sales to go at 4320 Mercy University Drive, uh, in Macon. It is an existing building. It's a convenience store. Uh, and I'm under the impression that they had the existing beer and wine license there. Uh, O-P-E-S, Opes, uh, Capital Partners LLC, 4320 Mercy University Drive, beer and wine package sales to go. Questions or comments about that one? And then we got, uh, item D, uh, which is, uh, a, a SR4415 Incorporated doing businesses Spring Express located at 15 Spring Street. That's for beer and wine package sales to go. This is a change of ownership. It is an existing convenience store with alcohol, change of ownership. Questions or comments about, uh, SR4415 doing businesses, Spring Street for beer and wine package sales to go at that location? Final item on the consent agenda is a new alcohol license for Perdiom Market LLC located at 455 Poplar Street, uh, in Macon downtown. It is for beer and wine package sales to go. Um, and this is in the same locations where the old oat muggy traders was in the, in the ground floor of the Danenburg Building facing out on the Poplar Street. So somebody's apparently putting Perdiom Market in there and, and wants beer and wine, uh, package sales to go from that location. Uh, questions about, uh, Perdiom Market LLC at 455 Poplar Street? All of these, uh, applications that we've discussed have the proper certification from the sheriff's office, county engineer planning and zoning as well as business licensing, uh, and the certification by the in, county engineer. Can I get a motion to approve these final four? We, we've tabled the first one, but these final four, uh, alcohol licenses for final approval tonight. Can I get a motion? Got, got a motion and a second by?
Second.
Good. Got a motion and second by Watkins. Uh, the further discussion here, none all in favor of issuing these four licenses, signify by saying aye? Oppose, say no? The ayes have it, they'll be on tonight's, uh, agenda for final approval. Um, that takes us now into, to, to new, new business. Uh, and the first item of new business, I think is gonna be the shorter of the two. So let me take it first. That's the Lake Tobasovki. Um, and, and, uh, Michael, are you prepared to, to talk about this Lake Tobasovki? Or Duke, is that you? Or do you want me to call on Commissioner Allen? Commissioner Allen, you want to start us off on this?
This goes back to 2012, Mr. Mayor. These are items that, uh, we should have been taking place from 2013 on up to at least to 2016. Then we had this now another splash which money was set aside for. And this will be the beginning and hopefully be a long time once we get all these money spent that the lake should have been spent at Lake Tobasovki before 2018. And I'm just asking that we, uh, add this additional money. We, we got some good, good bids on this. We had, uh, and it's time to, the time to finish the job where the job in recreation and most of all Biff County has been taken care of, except at Lake Tobasovki, that's a, that's a diamond in the rut is always been told. And I'm just asking this board, let's go ahead and do what should have been done a long time ago.
As I.
From my understanding, this would be in the form of a change order because the original bid contemplated this work within its original scope. See Clay's on.
Good. Clay, are you in the, in the room there with Dr. Moffett?
Yes, sir.
Good. Can, can you kind of bring us up to speed on this? And, and who, who is the, the contractor that won the bid? And then what's the, what's the, uh, amendment?
Yes, sir. Uh, the original contract, uh, was part of a master plan that was done back in 2014, I believe. And we put it out for bid, got received five bids, Warren and Associates won the bid and the commission has awarded that contract. We intentionally kind of kept the, the amount of items that he was bidding on low because we didn't know how much they were gonna cost because it was ranger station, it was guard houses, it was just a pavilions, bathrooms, that type of thing. So what we've done is because the bids came in where they were and we were able to bring it in at a reasonable number, uh, Donald out at Lake Tobasovki has asked if we can expand his scope of work to include instead of two bathrooms, eight bathrooms, instead of one pavilion, two pavilions, uh, and those types of items that, you know, rebuilding the, uh, lifeguard stands, fixing, putting new picnic tables in, those types of things. And replacing some stuff that's basically, it's a lot of it's a maintenance items. Um, but the amount of work that, that Warren's looking to do is about a million three of additional work, uh, out there.
How much was the original?
Part of the original master plan, Mayor.
How much was the original proposal?
About a million three, but there's two million eight in the total budget for Lake Tobasovki that you've appropriated funds for.
And you want to add an additional 1.3?
That is correct.
And the 2.8 is in the splosh, I assume?
That is correct. Uh, there's $400,000 from the 2012 splosh that was never spent. It was the only item that never had anything done with it. Uh, and there's an additional, uh, 2.4 million dollars. So there's about 2.8 million dollars total contract. Williams, uh, Warren's original contract was a million three. Got about a million five left to spend out there.
And that was allocated, excuse me, that was allocated for this fiscal year?
That is correct.
Okay.
It has already been appropriated. Those funds have all been appropriated by the commission already. There's the, the. So what is in this case is the amount of the change order would be expensive. Now five, either four or five times, we've put stuff back out for bid like this. And the, the winning bidder from the first part of the contract always wins the bid because he doesn't have any new costs, uh, mobilization and things like that.
Just because I'm curious, what, what, what was your initial plan? Was there something else that was gonna happen with the other half of the money? Was there a second project that we're no longer doing?
No, sir. Uh, what happened was essentially is that, that we were concerned about the total cost of the first phase of the improvements that Donald requested. We did not have any idea how much the new ranger station or the guard houses would cost. Uh, we did not know how much the renovations to the pavilions would cost or the bathrooms. That was just a random number. Um, so when we got the numbers back from Warren and the other five bidders, he was obviously the low bid. Now we have real numbers. So we, you know, in the original scope of work was two bathrooms. Now we want to do a total of 10 bathrooms.
But all the work, Clay, would, would all the work be within the scope of the original two point, whatever that was appropriated originally? In other words, this, you wouldn't have to appropriate any more money for this work.
That is correct. There would be no more for additional money. Um, and it's just, it's, it's expanding the numbers of items. Like I said, we, we only bid two bathrooms knowing we wanted to do 10, but we just didn't know how much they were gonna cost till the bids came in.
So shouldn't we be like, be rebidding it or something? It seems like we're doubling it. There's gotta be a better step in place. Go to extra bathrooms. I think you just said it, it, it's at the lowest bid. That would be the say. And I think one of the, is we're at the, uh, the master plan. How long has this master plan been in place?
Since 2014.
Since when?
2014.
Okay. Does that master plan also cause at some point for a hotel out there?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. So, so I, I just think whatever we decide to do going forward, when we, we try to, I, I don't know how else going forward, we're gonna be, begin to fund these master plans. Because we know a lot of these ricks in us have one. I think Lake Tobasovki is for years been our primary, um, uh, park water area. Uh, some of y'all probably say Amerson now because Amerson, I think came in like what number three or something. But, uh, I just think we, we need to just try to, you know, start funding these master plans best we can, uh, and see them completed. Cause, uh, I look forward to seeing a one day hotel at Lake Tobasovki.
Uh, question for the county attorney. Is there a, a resolution that has been prepared? Or does this not need legislative action? Just needs approval or what?
No, it nee, it needs, we need to, if, if they're okay with this, we do need to, uh, either do a resolution or approve change order for the scope. I don't, we need to, we need to draft that for their consideration.
Okay. Can we get that done before six o'clock?
I mean, so we want 1.3, you know, calm down, I'm not here.
I thought the hotel was years ago. You said it was 2014? I thought the master plan before we came on board, I always heard about a master plan of a hotel being built at Lake Tobasovki.
That was the 2012 unit. We did it in 2012. And that's, we had the master plan. I was out there. We had the master plan. Bert was there. And it, it had a hotel out there. It had to change the, the stations and all. We had this thing all planned out and just got put off to the wayside every, every year.
So y'all traded a hotel plan for six more bathrooms?
If, if I may, Commissioner, the, when we went out with the architect, uh, Dunwood, he's the architect out there. And we started looking at the conditions of the existing facilities. We haven't traded the, the hotel. Uh, there's not enough money in the, in this splosh to fund a hotel, I can assure you. But what we found was that some of the bathrooms, the skylights have caved in. Uh, the fixtures aren't hanging on the wall. We've got pavilions that are literally in danger of collapsing.
Oh, yeah.
101 picnic tables that are, that are in need of some repair. I mean, there's, there's a lot of deferred maintenance out there. So our thought was we had to get a ranger station because they were in the, uh, the old trailers left over from the Mother's Day tornado and trailers are no good. So we said, well, let's, let's do the absolute requirements first. And what we ended up with was got, we got five. And so now we have some money left over and we'd like to continue to expand the scope of work out at Lake Tobasovki. Even though this is in the original scope.
Commissioner Luke.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, I am in favor of this. However, I want to, to note of the fact that we are sitting here going through these changes, uh, substantial changes in this meeting. We don't know everything that's going on. We're trying to ask questions. That's how we mess up on stuff. We sit in these meetings and we try to digest all this stuff rather than having the committee system to work. And I know we're at a disadvantage. But I frankly feel uncomfortable voting for this, although I'm gonna support it because I know Tobasovki needs a lot of work. But we have not looked at this plan in a long, long time. We don't, uh, really, all of us don't know everything that's out there, what needs to be improved, what's gonna be spent where. So we really are just operating kind of in the dark. We're, uh, operating on our faith and our good feelings about this. My other question is, um, this same contractor is doing work at Dolores Brooks and also doing the Second Street, uh, project and several, and Train Recreation Center. My question is, are any of those projects gonna be moved aside or shifted in order for this work to take place? And I hope that it's not because those projects are ongoing and we need to see that work completed before this particular project. So can anybody tell me, please tell me that none of this other work, that the Tobasovki work is not gonna be put ahead of, of finishing Dolores Brooks part and the other, uh, things that are already out there?
If I may, Commissioner, um, uh, Warren and Associates has completed the work at South Bia. They've completed the work at Dolores Brooks. Uh, they, they are not doing the Second Street project. That is Sheridan Construction doing Second Street.
Oh, okay.
The only project he has with us right now and that contract is not in place yet is the train building. So his work with us and all.
We've approved it.
I'm sorry?
We've approved it.
And, and that's being managed through CAS, um, but I don't know that he's gotten a PO or gotten a contract signed yet.
Okay, so who, who knew that Dolores Brooks was completed? I've had some citizens to say it's not.
The only thing that's not complete is the lights.
It's not completed, man.
Well, but Sheridan, I'm sorry, Warren and Associates did not have the contract for the lights. That's being done by another contractor by the light.
If we can just make sure that projects are being completed because we had this discussion not too long ago that we wanted things completed in the order that they were started, if that makes sense. And I know everything can't work that way, but we need to make sure we don't start on something and then jump to something else. That's all I, I want. I'm, I'm prepared to support Tobasovki, but I want some more information next week in committee on what exactly we're doing for that, what, one million? It's a million?
Yes, ma'am.
Three.
A million three? That we're voting on kind of in the blind, but I'd like more information.
Commissioner Lucas, what we can do is prepare a resolution with the attached change order and the detail on what's gonna be done. And we can submit it to, uh, the commission next Tuesday.
Right.
Look at it.
This, this is why people can criticize us as some of these folks who are running for office, for mayor especially. They criticize us because we don't get all the information when we should. And we need to slow down and make sure we're making the right decisions on all this stuff. And we know what we are doing when we do. So.
Okay. Commissioner Vivin, are, are you there? You indicated that you wanted to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I do. I, I don't remember a discussion about a hotel at Lake Tobasovki. But we're agreeing that we're gonna bring this up and discuss it next week.
Well, not, not the hotel. The only thing this, this, this amendment would do is to add a pavilion, bathrooms and, and that kind of thing. But we'll get a list of what's, but it does, not a hotel.
Okay, so the hotel is not included now?
No, right. It does not contemplate a hotel.
Oh, okay. I just want to clear that up because I don't remember an agreement to put a hotel in Tobasovki.
So what we're gonna do is to get something for committees next week? Is that right, Duke?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so, so no further action on this tonight, but we'll, we'll get the, the information for the committees, uh, next Tuesday. Let me move on. Excuse me?
Thank you.
Okay, let me, let me move, move on, let me move on quickly then, uh, to the last item. This is the broker of record. Several of, of the commissioners, uh, including myself have, have received a phone calls of, from the BB and T, uh, folks asking us to reconsider. We've got, uh, Mike Kaplan. We've got, uh, Mike Kaplan, this invited and is on the line as well as Mark Johnson. And I don't want them to get into a back and forth, but I'll call on Mike Kaplan at this point to kind of say why he thinks we need to reconsider what we, what we did. Mike, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am here. Well, first of all, I'm trying to understand what you, what you did, Mr. Mayor. Um, from what I understand, we received notice from our insurance companies, not from the city, but from insurance companies that you had signed a broker record letter basically firing us and replacing us with an agent in Mississippi, who I'm not even sure Karen Pender cuff has ever met, and I'm not even sure you've met. You did this based upon a recommendation from someone that I, I don't really care. He got on and, and made some accusations about lack of coverages that we had, what a poor job basically we had been doing. And you haven't been getting the service you deserve. And nothing could be further from the truth. You didn't even ask us. You have a risk manager. Did you ask her what her position was on this before this decision was made? I, I'm not sure that happened.
Well, let me, let me see if we can give you a little bit of additional information. I can call on Mark Johnson. You can, you can hear him for just a minute and then we'll come right back to you for further response. Can we do that? Would that make sense?
Well, I, I don't, I, I, sure. You can do anything you want. It's your meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to conduct a meeting and, and get you heard, but you're asking more questions than I think I'm prepared to answer. Mark, are you there?
Hey.
Hey, Mayor. I am here.
Good. Can, can, can you, can you kind of refresh, uh, our recollection and answer any of the specific questions that Mr. Kaplan just asked?
Well, Mayor, I don't know if I had a specific question from him, but, um, I do know that we conducted a pretty extensive review of your policies and we found a couple of pretty substantial amount of issues that we thought should be brought forward to you and the county, county, county manager, as well as the commission that, um, that are some exposures that we thought were worthy of conversation. And also issues that quite frankly, we thought was substantial in nature.
And, and. Can I say something? Can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
And just, and just a minute, Mike, I'll come back to you just momentarily. I was just going to say, we, we know Mark Johnson, Mark Johnson is right outside of Birmingham, Alabama, and has his own outfit called Creative Benefit Solutions. But Mark is in business with SMC Terminus Municipal Advisors, Financial Advisors. And SMC Terminus does a lot of work for us on the financial front. They help walk us through health insurance. Mark was involved in the health insurance rebid of this. So it really came as no surprise that, that he came with an, an offer to investigate how we could save money and be more efficient in our insurance claim business. I will admit to you, uh, I'm, I'm not a insurer in the insurance business. Um, my impression of what we were doing was to, to give Mark the authority to get quotes on different coverages for us because Mark seemed to think that different coverages might be more effective for our particular situation, especially as the first responders where we are self insured up to 1.5 million dollars under the.
That's not true, Mr. Mayor.
That's incorrect.
That's incorrect, Mr. Mayor.
Well, hold on. I'm, I'm going to come right back to you and you can, you can get, get that. So, so we brought this to the commission and, and, and listened. And I think the commission was favorably impressed. So it was not so much, uh, 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 an intentional slight to BB and T or to you as, as much as it was an effort on our part to get a fresh set of eyes and a different perspective on opinions and coverages. Now, you can go from there and, and say how wrong we were to do that and.
Be glad to, be glad, be glad to, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Johnson, if you've spoken to our risk manager to confirm what your, I, I assume you didn't do it. I'm not sure if you're licensed for practically, anyway, but you brought these people in from Mississippi and made them your agent. Did you speak with risk manager to make sure what you were accusing us of not performing was actually true? Did you ask her if we had employer's liability? Did you ask her, this isn't, why isn't this appropriate? We were, he got his chance to say, well, what should I do, Commissioner Lucas?
Go ahead. He called on you.
Yeah, right.
Right. But my, I mean, I'm not, Mr. Mayor, this is not the time to get into, this is not a coverage issue. This is a policy issue in my opinion. You, 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 first of all, what he said wasn't true and you never, you never, you don't have any basis for those facts. He doesn't. He had, he took the policies. Somebody, somebody gave him copies of policies and he looked at them. But he accused of not having cyber liability. We do have cyber liability. He accused us of our intentions being too high. We, we go over this every year with Karen Pender cuff. We do our job. We provided, we provided defense and driving course for a thousand employees at our expense for free. We got our risk managers, our, our loss control department go to every major building you own and value. So it's not that we haven't done our job. We weren't even given a chance to defend ourselves. And, and the commission voted to fire us effective May the first, by the way, on certain policies, which means we can't even negotiate your renewal, which comes up in two months. Uh, and we've been handling insurance since 1982. We've been good stewards in this community. I employ hundreds of people in this town. I don't think this guy even lives here, the insurance agent you appointed in Mississippi. And so.
I will say this, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Well, hold on, Mayor Protem. I, I, I think Commissioner Lucas is next and then Commissioner Wynn, then I'll try to come back to you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you. I, I just think this back and forth is inappropriate. And I think that, that there are too many issues to be discussed for us to take up the time this afternoon doing it. I think this needs to be done in a different setting. It certainly does not be, need to be a back and forth with this because it leaves us in a terrible situation of lit, trying to listen to a hometown person and then trying to listen to what we were told about what we were, how we were exposed. So I would like for us to, uh, uh, do this issue like we did one earlier. And that is we take it into a committee and get all of the information there and then make a decision because we're not going to be able to make the decision here. Uh, this, this, this is just not, I, I just don't think this is the forum, the right forum where people having to defend themselves and go back and forth. And we don't have enough time to do an adequate job on it. At least I don't think so. So that's my opinion, Mr. Mayor, that this is not the time to, to discuss it.
Commissioner Wynn, I had you next. Then Mayor Protem, then Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I'll be the first to admit that I understood Mr. Johnson's presentation to be advising us that he would look and see if he could do any better for us. He did say the things that Mike Kaplan, that, that McGriff Insurance is not BB and T anymore. Um, said that they omitted some coverages or didn't have some coverages. I heard that. But I, and I shook my head, you know, I'm a former insurance person. I said, I don't believe they don't have that. I don't believe that that agency as large as McGriff is would have overlooked it. But I voted in favor of him looking into it. I did not vote for him to be agent of record. And if I did vote for that, that was my mistake for voting that way. But that was not my intention.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Mayor Protem?
Uh, let's go back to, uh, I think it was, uh, and Duke, uh, Mr. Attorney, help me out. Was it 1.2 or 1.5 where, um, the workers comp kicked in afterwards? It was that number. Was it 1.2 or 1.5?
I can't remember what the retention was, but it was a.
Okay.
My recollection, it was 1.5.
So, so, uh, so I think the, the conversation was about workers comp and that Macon Biip is self insured. And that just like a auto insurance deductible, which most folks are 250, 500 or 1,000. Then afterwards, you know, the insurance company pays the rest. And so I think we were talking about 1.5 million that Macon Biip was paying for workers comp. And I think the presentation was, uh, Mike, and I think you, you talked to me as well. And you say you went back and, and saw the last meeting. And so the discussion, Commissioner Watkins says, oh, he was just asking around about number and says, there's, there may be something out there for 750,000. And so.
You are rich.
And so if that saving, so we were like looking at, well, we could find something for 750 or less than the 1.2 or 1.5, that would be enticing. So, uh, you know, you know, mutual finance, Billy Pitts has held our insurance. BB and T, uh, has held our insurance. So these things have changed over time. So, uh, I did not know that we were, there was no resolution to say, are we getting rid of one company and hiring another? Commission, in fact, Commissioner Lucas was adamant to say to our attorney, I think we need a resolution because this sounds like action. So your issue, sir, is with the administration because we were originally told that we did not even need a resolution or a motion. So, um, you know, not having all of your information. In fact, I had never talked to you before. Uh, somebody even gave you my personal cell phone, which, uh, we corrected that. But, uh, whatever we do going forward, I think, uh, if Macon Biip can save, uh, $250,000 or $500,000, I don't think you would be opposed to that. I think what you're saying is give you a fair opportunity to present your case. And so asking the gentleman question is not an opportunity to present your case. I think as commissioners have said, and Lucas, that we tabled something because this is going to come up tonight. Later on, if it's something that we need to take further action in this COVID situation and look further in the committee, that may be something that we need to do. Uh, because I'm not aware that I voted to fire anybody. Uh, I, I, I don't, I don't recall ever since I've been there six years, voting to fire somebody. But nobody but Dale Walker. So, uh, so I, I stand, uh, I stand down.
Good. Uh, Commissioner Jones, I had you next.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor, we have a, um, buy down to 750,000. We're at 750,000 retention right now. So let's just make that clear. It's not.
Commissioner Jones? Yes, sir. Can you hear me? Yes, sir. Go ahead. Here's, here's the issue. You asked us to vote on a change of the agent of record and not being well versed in the insurance business. I had no idea that meant that you were going to fire the existing carriers. But in fact, that's what you did, Mr. Mayor. I've got a copy of all the letters. I sent it to all the commissioners late this afternoon. I had to scan it from another person because I was having trouble. It's coming from Tiffany Massengill. So you, you, you really, you have misled us because there was no disclosure as to, well, by virtue of making Mr. Johnson or whoever, John Doe, the agent of record. In effect, I'm going to send out a letter and you're, and we're going to cancel our current contract with, in this case, McGriff. Now, I won't say it's unethical, but at, at the very least, it's very discourteous. You don't treat people that way. That's very wrong to do. So, you know, Yogi Berra had an expression called deja vu all over again. And here we are where we don't get the information that we as a board deserve to have. And by virtue of that, we vote on something, the same point Commissioner Lucas has made before, and I'm making it now. We don't have the information and we, we had no intention and we were not voting to fire anybody. And all we want, you know, to me, the process is flawed because we should be sending out a, an RFP and compare quotes and bids like we've always done every, on everything. But in fact, you've sent out a letter that terminates our coverage with the current carrier for workman's comp. It terminates property insurance. It terminates general liability. It terminates auto. It terminates boiler machinery like HVAC equipment. It terminates cyber and it terminates pollution insurance. So my problem is the process and the lack of information from you, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect, you didn't give us the rest of the story as Paul Harvey used to say. Give us the full story so we can make an informed, educated decision and then we'll know what we're voting on. That's, we've been misled terribly so. And that's not in the best interest of the citizen taxpayers of Macon Biip County. Mike Kaplan is used to competing in the marketplace. And I think he, like most people, just want a level playing field where they can compete in the marketplace. And they don't want to be blindsided by something in a very discourteous fashion. And that's what was done here. So I'm very disappointed in the process. And that's not the way we should be treating anybody that we deal with, especially somebody who lives here and, and, and employees. But we shouldn't treat anybody that way, period.
Mr. Commissioner, this is Mark. I apologize. I've been blocked out and could not talk for a moment. Listen.
Well, I'm not quite through, Mark. And so you bear with me. I'm not quite done. So that, that's my disappointment. That's the issue here. I don't have any problem with Mark or anybody else reviewing it and, and telling us, okay, here's what we found. But at the very least, the current carrier should have the option and the right to compete in the marketplace. We shouldn't be throwing him under the bus or anybody else that we currently do business with and not even show them the courtesy of talking to them. So I'm very disappointed in the process, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect, it's not the way to treat people. Uh, I'm sorry you feel that way, Commissioner Jones. And I resent the fact that you think that I may have deliberately or intentionally misled anybody. That's why I wanted to bring it all out and have an open meeting involving all of the commissioners. No one-on-one, no backdoor, this, that, or the other. Bring it out. Let us. That's exactly what. I listened to you. Will you please let me finish? Please, sir. Thank you. So I, 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 in an, in an effort to present this to the commission, had, had a meeting and, and presented information for you. I, I'm no expert in insurance either. But I think it was good to have the, the, the discussion that we did and to, to decide collectively and confirmed that we wanted to issue a broker of record letter to Mark Johnson's outfit, which is what we've done. Now, now let me, before I give this back over to Mark. Broker of record letter, I've learned in the meantime, give a five-day period for a rescission. And if you exercise the right to rescind the, the broker of record letter, then, then it's null and void.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. To make that rescission.
Mr. Rabbi motion.
Fine. Hold on. Let me call on Mark and then I'll get to Rabbi. Mark?
I was, Commissioner Rabbi, Rabbi, I think you were about to say something. You had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, I did. But the mayor's giving you the floor and I'll, I'll go after you.
Okay, okay. Well, listen, here's the deal. There, there is, we were hired to do a specific thing. And we accomplished a few, a lot of things in our tenure with Macon Biip County. And part of that was, you know, we understand the counties under budget restraints and trying to control their budget and trying to make certain that the, the county does not have, you know, a negative budget situation or anything that affects the citizens or the employees of the city of Macon Biip County. So now, as it was, as it stands with where we are today, we were brought in and we looked at the health and welfare benefits. And we made recommendations. And in those recommendations, we were able to show Macon Biip County significant savings. We reset your budget. Macon Bibb County significant savings. We reset your budget, we set, reset the plans, everything that employees are experiencing today. There's a new consulting firm in, in, involved, but really in 2018, 2019, we spent a lot of time resetting the table and those things have all been successful. So now, we were asked also to look at your other programs. We were asked to look at your work comp program. We looked, asked to look at your work comp TPA. We were asked to look at your work comp excess. And as we looked at those programs, you know, we're not pointing the finger at BBNT or we're not pointing the finger at um, Truist or wherever the name of the firm is right now. That's not our goal. Our goal is
It's McGriff, by the way.
Yeah.
Whatever the name of the firm is, whatever name of the firm, we weren't, we weren't, this is not personal for us. This, this is about Macon Bibb County. And so for us, we, we specifically looked at the terms and the language and the exclusions and the policies. We laid it out in a PDF to you guys last Tuesday that clearly explained what we did. We looked at the policy exclusions. We looked at the policy language. We looked at the retention. We looked at who the carriers were. We looked at a lot of various points of information. And the number one thing that stood out to us when we started looking at this, it was problematic. We saw that there was a workers' compensation policy for your first responders that had a one point five million dollar retention. And we brought that to your attention. Now, you may have known about it. We don't know if you knew about that or not. Now, there's a buffer layer. There's a couple buffalo layers that are out there, but if you go deep into those policies, you find additional issues with those policies. So I'm not here to debate those policies with whatever the guy's name is, Mr. Kaplan, with BBNT, McGriff, whoever he's with. That's not my, that was not what I was hired to do. That was not what I was hired to do. What I was hired to do was make a recommendation to the Macon County, Bibb County Board. And so now, here's where I think that there's another thing that needs to be discussed. We worked with HR and the Risk Management Department of Macon Bibb County. We talked to finance at Macon Bibb County. We talked to the county manager about these issues at Macon Bibb County. We talked to the mayor about these issues at Macon Bibb County. We talked to the commission at Macon Bibb County about these, these issues. We also have provided highlighted as well as detailed information about the page, the exact paragraph, the problem in the policies that we feel should be addressed by Macon Bibb County. So now, if your broker wants to do something, he needs to respond and look at that information and tell you guys how he's protecting you on those exposures. That's not my problem. My, my job was to come in
Mark, you're not the issue. You are not the issue.
Well, no, I think I was. I think my name came up personally.
No, so you're not.
Personally, you have a problem with me personally. You asked me about my licenses. I'm licensed in Alabama, Georgia, Tennessee.
Can you meet everybody and just have more?
Licensed all over where I work. I'm never working anywhere where I'm not licensed. So don't, don't, do not challenge me on my authority to do what I'm doing. So if you wanna talk to me, Mr. Kaplan, we can have that conversation, but this is not the forum for that. I don't think it is. And I stand behind what I said, and I stand behind the documents I put in front of Macon Bibb County. And I will do that every day.
Let me get us back on, let me get us back on track and see if Commissioner Schlesinger, he was next.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Commissioner Watson.
Um, I will tell you, speaking of Dale Walker, that I have what I would call an IPC feeling about this. Um, there's, there's something that to me just does not, um, smell right in this whole thing. And I think we gotta stop. And I think we've got to, uh, really take a close look at the precipice that we, we find ourselves on, um, right now and retreat from it if that's gonna be in the best interest of the, uh, county. We, I, I've talked to a couple insurance, uh, people and who have told me that in order to do a comprehensive, uh, review, you do not have to be the broker of record. And we were told last week that indeed, in order to do a comprehensive review, you have to be the broker of record. And if, if, if that's the case, and what I've heard from, uh, you know, others in the field that you don't, you can still do the comprehensive review, then, uh, we were lied to, you know, plain and, uh, simple and led to, uh,
That's inflammatory.
Uh, we were, we were led to, uh, the resolution that we, uh, we passed. So I am gonna remake the motion that we as a commission rescind the decision that we made, uh, last week, uh, so that we can slow things down, that, uh, you know, we instruct the, uh, mayor to, uh, to send letters to those he's already sent letters to, uh, letting them know that, uh, we have, uh, rescinded it and, uh, that we just, uh, take some time because this is not just workers' compensation that, that, uh, we're talking about in terms of the insurance. It's a lot more of the insurance concerns of the county that, uh, seem to, uh, be, uh, handed off to, uh, someone else at, at this point. We, we just need to, uh, stop and, um, uh, really think about what we're doing and make sure we're making the right decision. And you know, I, I, I know Creative Benefit Solutions is, uh, is a good company. We were told IPC was a, 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 a good company is, as well, but they, they, they can't hold really a candle to, uh, McGriff and, and what they are really able to, to do for us. And, you know, frankly, it depends on how much we're willing to, uh, you know, pay for insurance, uh, coverage as a, uh, county because we can, we can get anything we want. Um, and you can do anything with, uh, money and that has sort of limited us in the, uh, in, in, in the past. So I, I make that motion we, uh, rescind.
Is there a second to the motion?
Valerie Nguyen, second the motion.
And then
If I may further discuss, question? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Pro Tim?
Mr. Watson.
Well, I'm sorry. We jumped over Watkins. Let me get Watkins first and then, then May Pro Tim. And then we gotta go. It's already six twenty.
Um, and, and I guess I need clarity, um. My understanding, if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, have we counseled our workers' comp? And if so, what type of coverage do we have now?
No, you, you, the, the coverage is still in effect. What you've done, what we've done i- is to issue a broker of record letter, changing the broker of record. And, and that doesn't quote unquote fire anybody. What it does is it gives the authority to Mark Johnson and, and his crew to, to solicit quotes on behalf of Macon Bibb County from companies, even if they are currently, uh, quoting through McGriff.
Ab- absolutely, Mayor, and, and very, very clear to everybody in the room. I wanna make sure I add a couple of points to everything that's been said. So listen, you guys. I'm sorry?
I see what Mayor Rickard said is not
Well, let me clarify. Let me clarify. You tell, you tell me, you tell me
He is, he is now your insurance agent. Mr. Rickard, he is now your insurance agent.
No, let me clarify. Let me clarify what's true.
May the first, he is the
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I asked too much.
Mr. Kaplan, hold on. You're not
Yeah, I can, may I ask a question too? I would like to ask a question too, and then they answer. That way we can move a little bit more.
Yeah, Commissioner Watson, go ahead.
Yelling back and forth. Um, so I, and I think I have clarity now. The broker of record is the insurance agent. That'll be the person who's responsible for soliciting the bids, the oversight arm, the third-party oversight arm for our insurance coverage. That is currently Mr. Kaplan's role, if I'm understanding this correctly. And last week, it seems as though we, we are, we made a decision to make Ma- Mark Johnson's company the new insurance agent, a broker of record. And my, I'm on, I'm on pace with that. And it is Mr. Johnson's intent to now go to the market and see if he can find a better deal for workers' comp and whatever other, all packages exist in the world for Macon Bibb County. That's something that Mike Kaplan could have done or was planning to do or possibly does. I don't know, but for whatever reason, we made a decision. I, I, I'm reading this right. We're talking about changing the insurance.
Yes, I think you, I think you, I think you've accurately stated it. Uh, yeah, we changed the broker of record and that, that gives Mark the opportunity to go, or gives him the sole opportunity, I guess, what Mr. Kaplan would say, gives him the sole opportunity to go to companies and solicit bids on our behalf.
Okay. Are you, are you?
Okay, um, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Watson, I suggest doing a heartbeat. I'm not afraid of competition, doing RP and issuing bid specs and letting them perform and earn business like we had to do. And everybody does an RP with pitch specs.
I thought I was up there.
Well, you know, in eight, since nineteen eighty-two, I don't think there's been a bid on this. It's always been brokered by one firm. So I'm not necessarily attacking any firm here. I'm just telling you guys that, listen, here's, here's our position. Here's our position. We were brought in to do one job. We were brought in. Macon Bibb County had major budget issues in twenty seventeen when we were contacted by Terminus Minnesota Advisors. Well, it has to do with everything we're talking about. We were brought in to specifically look at ways to cut the budget for Macon Bibb County to where there were not gonna be major issues laying off employees or issues around the, the finances of Macon Bibb County. So now, we stayed in a neutral position on health and welfare. We stayed in a neutral position on the work comp. We started looking at the work comp and all the other policies in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We were asked specifically, how do we get our costs down? And so now, it's not our fault that we look at everything and we say there's exposures that are out there. If you're trying to get your costs down, yeah, there's a premium cost. There's the ability to save money on premium. But there's also an issue around risk of your risk platform. And so now, all we did was look at your specific policies in place today, and we pointed out some issues with those policies. So now, maybe, maybe, maybe the mayor knew about it. Maybe the, maybe the county commission knew about it. I don't know that. All I know is that when we looked at it, we presented some issues with those policies that are some exposures around first responders, exposures around diseases, a lot of exposures that today, in today's market or any day's market, we think are very, very major. So now, you have buffalo layers. I'm not, we're, we're not gonna talk insurance on this call.
Right.
But at the end of the day, I'm just here to say the fact that we just looked at things and said, here are some issues that we see that we think are major.
Very good. Mr. Johnson, I, I need, I need, I need to cut this off with twenty-five minutes beyond, uh, going to the six o'clock meeting. And we've got a motion and a second. Uh, the motion from Schlesinger's second by Wayne and old Watkins to rescind the broker of, of record letter. I need to take, is there further discussion before we take a vote?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones waving his hand in front of the camera. Commissioner Jones?
I'm ready for the vote. The point needs to be made, Mr. Johnson, this is not about you and your fine company. It is not about Mr. Mike Kaplan and his fine company. It's all about the process that was the way it was handled. That's the only issue here. Nothing about either fine company. So you don't need to sell us your insurance today. We don't, we weren't around and we weren't involved, even if we were around in, involved in the negotiations. I mean, I don't do insurance. I have one expertise in this life and it's not insurance. But I know it's about cost and benefits and risk. I think you would agree with that. So we were not involved in that negotiation. I know it's a balancing act, trying to determine what you want and what you wanna pay and that's, and what kind of risk you wanna take. But so it's, it has nothing to do with Mark Johnson's company and not, nothing to do with Mike Kaplan's company. It has to do with the process. The process is flawed.
We need to, we need, we need to move, we need to move on. Uh, uh, any further final comments?
I was
I see your hand, but we really do need to
Mayor Pro Tim.
Mayor Pro Tim, then Commissioner Lucas?
Well, I, I've been patiently waiting just to say, listen, uh, here we are again, uh, trying to correct something that, uh, this letter went out from the administration. Uh, I don't think Commissioner Schlesinger, I don't think you should have made a motion. Uh, here we are again, gonna look like the bad guy or the good guy by something that we didn't know. This, the mayor has taken upon himself and his administration to move forward with something. My vote last week was to, uh, do as our advisor stated. And that's what we did. That's what I did. I'm more clear today that, uh, if a new company wants to move forward and present us something, there's what we call an RFQ, uh, for proposal, uh, or RFP, and let's move forward with that. But, uh, I don't even wanna vote on this because it just causes so much confusion with us as commissioners to get caught up. And then we'll say, who's next? You know, mutual finance, they're out there. Uh, Billy Pitts is out there waiting. We, we did some, some stuff with their company. So who's next? Uh, this thing has been in place since nineteen eighty-two. My understanding today is more clear. People just, after year after year, just being renewing policies. And this, this will be one additional policy that the county manager, I will say, you know, I have not, I'll just give the county manager credit. The county manager, over the last six to eight months, and y'all see it, commissioners, has began to look at some stuff and bring some stuff that I wish Dale Walker would have given him the opportunity to do uh, a couple of years ago. And perhaps Dale would be here and Dr. Moffett would be making him look good, uh, like he's trying to make this administration, this last year for us, look good. But to sit here, I don't wanna vote on it. I'm not gonna get caught up in it. Nobody's gonna use me 'cause my vote was not to fire anybody, and that is a difference. And so when we're sitting here talking about we're gonna rescind or remove a vote back, we need to give our local vendors, number one, we give them preference. And number two, we give them an opportunity to be. And that's what we need to do. But who the mayor decides to fire from a department head or somebody we're doing business with, that's not always a commission issue. It should be, and those are things that we need to look at in the charter. But to sit here today and go through this long discussion, uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not, not gonna do that. I'm not gonna do that.
Off of the question, we don't have to vote.
Right. We, we, we do need to vote and ge- get on to the meeting. So, so
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Lucas, yes, ma'am.
Have you already issued that letter five days?
Yes, ma'am.
I've, so what, what we're, the motion is, is a moot point, isn't it?
No, it's not. Commissioner, the, um, the, the motion is to rescind the appointment of, and I, I'm forgiving Mr. Johnson. I can't remember the name of your company, um, as the broker of record. That's my understanding of the motion. Commissioner Schlesinger, is that true?
Uh, yes, and, uh,
If you vote for it, it will, this will be rescinded and the broker of record, at least at that point in time, will still be, um, uh, Mr. Kaplan's firm at this time.
And
Okay, so, so
can do their research without being the broker of record. They can still come to us and give us their, their recommendations.
That's right.
That was, that was gonna be my next question. Since we've already paid, uh, the Arrington firm for this work, are we still gonna get our money's worth by utilizing the expertise that they've brought to the table? Because now I certainly don't wanna leave us out there with one point five million dollars in exposure and we were all concerned about something last week. And I'm all for favoring the local people or whatever, but we can't sit up here and be foolish and allow ourselves to continue with that kind of exposure. And all of you know that last week, there was some serious issues brought to us and some serious issues that we need to deal with. So I certainly hope that however you vote, we're certainly going to deal with those issues because I'm not gonna be willing to leave it like it is.
All you're doing with an affirmative vote, or all you're asking to be doing with an affirmative vote is simply to rescind right now the broker of record change to Mr. Johnson's firm. You just, that's all. And if you vote yes for this, it's not, nothing's necessarily permanent.
And, and again, I just wanna to say that we were told last week that in order for them to do a comprehensive review, we had to, uh, designate them the broker of that in order for them to do a comprehensive review, we had to, uh, designate them the broker of record. They can do their comprehensive review without being the broker of, of record. So that was a lot.
Repeating yourself.
I know.
If, if I may.
Well, no, we need to call the question and move on.
How do you go, I don't think, well, we're not going to have a resolution.
Um, what?
Yeah, it doesn't work like that. I don't know if you can do that, um, through proprietary procedure.
Um, I, I would like to call the question and do a roll call vote. Vote yes if you want to issue a, a, a letter of rescission, vote no if you don't. The reason I did this tonight and with all apologies is because there is a five-day limitation. If you don't get a, if the, if the, if the old broker doesn't get a letter of rescission within five days, then the new broker of record becomes-
Expand, expand this five-day limitation. Expand.
I can't, I can't, boss, I can't.
So I, I will say-
That's why, that's why I brought, I allowed this debacle to go on now for the last forty-five minutes and well into the six o'clock meeting.
So I know that everything else that Terminus and Mark Johnson at his company have provided us resulted in millions of dollars in savings over the last couple of years. I, I've gotten to the point where I do trust their recommendations for our financial matters. I think if we probably went through what they're recommending now, it will result in some cost savings.
By doing this vote, I want to make sure you're not agreeing permanently to do anything. You can always, all you're doing right now is rescinding the broker of record, appointing Mr. Johnson's firm in place of Mr. Kaplan's firm. What you're doing, if you vote for this, is going back now to the broker of record, Kaplan's firm.
Absolutely.
And that's, it doesn't mean-
Is it true that you have to do a, you have to be the broker of record to do a comprehensive review?
I don't know the answer to that question. I've just heard this for the first time myself. So I, I would like to be able to look at that and come back to you because I understand that's what the commission wants.
Let me, let me, let me chime in and say this, and hopefully Mr. Kaplan will chime in and support me on this. We cannot get any quotes or deal with their existing market that you have today to negotiate anything if not being the broker of record. We cannot. Who you're with today, not saying that's who we would place it with, but we cannot place any coverage with existing broker or get any quotes from that existing company if we're not broker of record. And so let me, let me, let me, I don't want to belabor this anymore. But to do a full market search, to make certain that you have all markets covered, you need to have a trusted source that you go to. That can be Mr. Mr. Kaplan and his firm. It could be our firm. All we did was point out some issues and we want to solve them for you. And so now, we, we would say to leverage the market, it's better for us to be the broker of record as we, as we indicated, to solve some problems for you that we perceive to be major problems. And I'm going to shut it up from there. I'll, I'll let it go from there.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Telemann, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Bibbins, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Joe, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd is not with us. Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
No.
No.
Commissioner Nguyen, how do you vote?
Yes.
It's a tie, so the mayor-
It's a tie vote, Mr. Mayor, you'll need to break it.
Uh, tie vote forty-four. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm going to, to, to vote, uh, to, to keep, to rescind, I'm going to vote yes to rescind the letter of record and, and punt this to a new commission uh, that can put out an RFP or an RFQ and go through this entire process. Uh, in the meantime, uh, since we'll issue this letter of rescission, in the meantime, I'm going to call on Kaplan to take a different attitude about how he's been treated. I'm going to call on him to do his dead level best to save us money, to get the quotes, to, to, uh, take into account some of these things that have been brought to your attention. So that's the end of the vote. There's nothing else on this agenda.
And may I say this, Mr. Mayor?
No, sir, no, sir. We, we're trying to get on to another meeting.
That was a sorry excuse and reason to carry us through that. If you were going to do that, you could have did it from the beginning.
No, I, Shepherd was here for a while. Uh, I, I don't know where he went. So I, I beg your pardon and, and I, I, uh, so with, with nothing further on this agenda, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and give us a, a second or two to re, reset and stay tuned. We're going to start on the commission meeting thirty-five minutes late. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. With all apologies to those of you who have been waiting for the beginning of the six o'clock, uh, Macon Bibb County Regular Commission Meeting for May the fifth. I apologize, we have been involved in the pre-commission meeting and are now forty minutes late, uh, starting with our six o'clock meeting. Uh, I apologize, know that we've just been working hard on a very difficult entangled matter, but let me call to order this, uh, uh, meeting uh, and proceed with the first item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. The minutes of our pre-commission meeting held on April the twenty-first and our regular commission meeting held on, uh, April the twenty-first have been prepared and distributed uh, on any changes or corrections to, to those minutes. If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I may.
There's some, there's some-
Got a motion by Wayne, second by Allen, I think was who I heard. Uh, further discussion here none, all in favor of approval. Those two sets of minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it and the minutes are all approved. Uh, the next item, uh, on our agenda is the consent agenda, uh, which pertains to alcoholic beverage. The first, uh, uh, item, um, that was, it's not on, it's not on the agenda now. The, so item A on our consent, uh, agenda, it, and let me preface this by saying, all of these applications are accompanied by the requisite, uh, of documentation this, including the sheriff certification of a satisfactory background check, uh, a certification by planning and zoning, that the zoning is appropriate, uh, a certification by the business development, uh, services, that the appropriate license fees have been paid, and a certification by the, uh, county engineer that the distance and separation distances from prohibited structures like schools and churches uh, is appropriate for these locations and the ad that ran in the paper. Uh, the first, uh, is, item is, uh, is a license from J and B Seventeen Incorporated, doing business as H.P. Liquors, uh, located at sixty-three, uh, seventy-four Zebulon Road. Um, it is for liquor, beer and wine package sales to go, uh, from that new, uh, location, which is directly across the street from their old location. Uh, item B, uh, is a, a license for, application for Opes Capital Partners LLC, located at forty-three twenty, uh, Mercy University Boulevard. Uh, it is for beer and wine, uh, package sales to go. It is an existing convenience store, uh, building. Uh, item C is a new alcohol business licenses, SR forty-four fifteen Incorporated, doing business as Spring Express, located at fifteen, uh, Spring Street. Uh, that is a, uh, existing, uh, building, uh, and, and, uh, convenience store. Uh, this is a change of ownership. It is for beer and wine package sales to go, uh, from that location. Uh, item D, uh, is Perdim Market LLC, uh, located at four fifty-five, uh, Poplar Street. Uh, that is for beer and wine package sales to go. I believe that's the, the location in the Danenburg Building where the former Oak Muggy Traders was located. Beer and wine package sales to go from that location. Um, the committee of the whole recommends approval of these four licenses. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those four licenses signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it and those four licenses will be, uh, issued as requested. Uh, next, we have, uh, committee reports. We tried to do, uh, committees, uh, at our last, uh, uh, meeting. Uh, and therefore I'll call on the chairman of each committee to make a committee report. We'll start with Economic and Community Development Committee. Chairman Lucas, are you able to make that report, please, ma'am?
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, the, um, Economic and Community Development Committee met on April twenty-eighth and we took the following actions. We approved a resolution appointing Mary Brooks Warren to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board. We approved a resolution appointing Karen W. Hicks to the Fort Hawkins Board. And we approved a resolution to reappoint Mr. Harold Wilson to the Pension and Retirement System Division A Board. That ends our report.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, Chairman Lucas. Uh, next, uh, facilities and engineering, uh, Chairman Jones, are you there? Can you give us the facilities and engineering report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We passed a resolution to execute an amendment to Macon Bibb County's agreement with Cherry Street Capital Fund to LLC for the construction of a new solar canopy projects at the office of the Bibb County Tax Commissioner. And number two, the South Bibb Recreation Center to provide solar power and parking improvements with no added cost. Emphasis on no added cost to Macon Bibb County. And that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Jones. And finally, uh, Operations and Finance Committee, Chairman Watkins, are you there? Can you give us that report, please, sir?
And actually, I still don't have it. I'm trying to pull it up now, but the committee met on April- But the committee met on April the twenty-ninth and we took the following actions. Um, as I'm, I'm struggling with internet, but the items I through E on your agenda.
Would you like, would you like for the clerk to read the items that were in your committee?
Please do.
Okay.
Just keep getting a white screen here when I try to get to the thing on board.
Okay, the Operations and Finance Committee met on October, I'm sorry, on April the twenty-eighth. They passed a resolution to amend the Macon Bibb County Attorney's Office organizational chart for the purpose of adding a new assistant county attorney for litigation and a procurement position and a new paralegal position. They also approved a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of ninety-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to the Tax Commissioner's Office for small equipment improvement and capital improvement line items to provide for the purchase of state required scanners and for equipment and construction costs related to the transfer of business and alcohol license functions. They also approved another supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to the Solid Waste Department for the purchase of two Kenwood rear loaders and one bush hog grapple truck to be repaid from funds due from advanced disposal services. They passed, they amended the Business Development Services Department budget by transferring two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from various salary and benefit line items to contractual services. And finally, they passed an ordinance to amend the Solid Waste Department budget by transferring ninety-five thousand from landfill operations supplies to fund the purchase of a skid steer for the landfill. And that concludes the report of Operation and Finance.
Thank you.
Chairman Watkins, that sound right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, sir.
Very good. That, that, that concludes our, uh, committee reports then. So that'll take us into old business. And the first item of old business is an appointment to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board. And I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
Okay. A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Mary Brooks Warren to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, item B, uh, is, uh, an appointment to the Fort Hawkins Board. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Karen W. Hicks to the Fort Hawkins Board and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is item, uh, C, uh, which is an appointment to, to the Division A, uh, Pension Board. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission reappointing Harold Wilson to serve as a member of the Retirement Committee for the Macon Pensions and Retirement Systems Division A Plan and for other purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Um, item D, um, is a, a, a resolution to execute a contract with some additional solar projects. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to Macon Bibb County's agreement with Cherry Street Capital Fund to LLC for the construction of a new solar canopy projects at the office of Bibb County Tax Commissioner and the South Bibb Recreation Center to provide solar power and parking improvements with no added cost to Macon Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next- Uh, next is, uh, item E, uh, which is, uh, a, a, a res- resolution to amend the County Attorney's Organizational Chart, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the Macon Bibb County Attorney's Office organizational chart for purposes of adding a new assistant county attorney for litigation and procurement position and a new paralegal position and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, item F, uh, is an ordinance to appropriate some funds to make, uh, changes at the Tax Commissioner's Office, uh, to, uh, equip them, uh, to do business licensing and alcohol licensing tran- uh, functions online, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of ninety-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to the Tax Commissioner's Office, small equipment and improvements and capital improvement line items to provide for the purchase of state required scanners and for equipment and construction costs related to the transfer of business and alcohol licensing functions and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I know.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, sir, thank you, I know, uh, Tax Commissioner Wade McCord is there, do we have any idea of how long this is gonna take to do?
I, I don't, I don't think that the construction project's gonna take long at all, we did talk about when we gonna see some results, and we kind of agreed to look at this by April the first of next year, uh, and let him get through a cycle where he sends out the notices and lets people pay online and does a better job of following up and collecting them, so we're gonna, we're gonna check on it, uh, April the first of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance. Excuse me?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think you need to be looking at your, your monitor, we're trying to, I don't know how you're making a determination when we wanna speak, uh, my question was, I thought this item was tabled. Am I, am I looking at a different item? This item was tabled.
Yeah, you, you must be looking at a different item, but this was passed by the Operations and Finance Committee three to one.
Oh, okay, out of Operation and Finance Committee.
Yes.
Okay, I thought, I thought, which, which one through the Tax Commissioner, I thought it was one through the Tax Commissioner that we, we tabled this item.
You didn't table that one.
Okay.
So, right.
Mr. Attorney, uh.
Right, I tried, but it was just a three to one vote, I just screamed a lot.
All right, so, the, the ayes have it, the, the ordinance is adopted. That takes us to, that takes us to item G, which is another, uh, ordinance, uh, that, uh, buys some additional, uh, equipment, uh, for the landfill, uh, and Public Works Department, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to the Solid Waste Department machinery and equipment line item to provide for the purchase of two Kenworth rear loaders and one Bush Hog grapple truck to be repaid using funds due from Advanced Disposal Services Macon LLC to Macon Bibb County under contract C dash fifteen dash zero 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 three D and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, i- is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, n- next is item H, uh, uh, which is, uh, to amend Business Development Services Department line item, uh, from various, uh, salary and benefit line items to contractual services line item, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the Business Development Services Department budget by transferring two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from various salary and benefits line items to the contractual services contract labor line item to fund the Safe Built Services contract and for other lawful purposes.
The, uh, Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, that takes us, that takes us to item I, uh, which is the final item of old business, uh, and that's an ordinance, uh, to transfer, uh, ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, within the, um, landfill operations supplies line item, uh, to purchase a skid steer for the landfill, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the Solid Waste Department budget by transferring ninety-five thousand dollars from the landfill operations supplies line item to the machinery and equipment line item to fund the purchase of a skid steer for the landfill and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Um, that brings us to item five, which is new business, these items have been, uh, prepared by the County Attorney's Office and sent down, but more may be coming during the remainder of the week, so be sure and check the agenda that's published on Friday afternoon to see all of the, the resolutions and ordinances that have been prepared and will be discussed in our committee meetings, uh, next week, um, the twelfth, uh, of May, um, by, by Zoom, we'll be on Zoom again on the twelfth of May, or is it the twelfth of never? Uh, the first item of new business is item A, a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a professional services agreement with Replay Systems Incorporated for the purchase and installation of an E nine-one-one voice recording system and maintenance agreement in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars to be paid from the Capital Improvement Fund E nine-one-one machi- machinery and equipment line item, I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand and eighty dollars for installation of the Musco Lighting System at Bloomfield Park and Recreation Center to be paid from two thousand and eighteen splotch funds, I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item C is a companion to item B, and that's a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for installation of a lighting system at Bloomfield Park and Recreation Center to be paid from two thousand and eighteen splotch funds. Um, I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, next is item D, it's an ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation from fund balance in the amount of forty thousand dollars to the Superior Court Budget Professional Services Court Reporter line item to provide additional funding for court reporters, I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, finally, a resolution to rename Dempsey Park as the Carolyn Creighton Cherry Blossom Park in honor of Carolyn Creighton's contribution to the Macon Bibb County, uh, community, uh, that's sponsored by Commissioner Schlesinger and Commissioner Watkins, I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development, uh, Committee. As I say, additional, um, ordinances and resolutions may be coming down from the County Attorney's Office during the balance of the week, so check the agenda. Now, we've reached the end of our agenda for tonight, uh, is there any further business points of personal privilege anybody wants to make? Mr. Commissioner Lucas, point of personal privilege.
Thank you, well, the only thing, I wanted to mention something in conjunction with the last new business item, uh, there are a number of churches and memberships that have requested that, you know, like, we have designated a portion of the street in honor of the minister, we have a number of those, and then there is a, also a request to rename the Wise Avenue Park in honor of Dr. Betty Talbert, who is in ill health at this time, and so there are a lot of people who want to kind of rename, uh, while she's here, uh, uh, with us, so if the legal department is far enough along on those, I'd like for those to be considered when we look at the Carolyn Creighton Park.
We'll, we'll certainly try to get legal to see if they get them down, and if so, I'll be glad to re- refer them and look on the agenda by Friday and see if they're gonna go to Economic and Community Development Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other points of personal privilege? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
No move.
And without obje- without objection, we are adjourned, thank you very much for your patience.